I think we've corrected all of our technical difficulties. So I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Before we hear the cases. Mine's on.
I can't.
I got a green light.
Put it up close, there you go.
Try it again.
I got, I got the go-ahead sign. It's on.
Kristen, can you hear? Yes, ma'am, we're good.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna read the guidelines that we...
You two can't get her?
Can't get me? I'm good.
This is long enough to get both of us?
Sorry. It is?
All right, let's try this. There, you got it? "This is a public hearing and we are the Zoning Board of Adjustments for Putnam County, Florida. We operate under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Land Development Code as amended. The primary responsibility of the Board is to hear and decide appeals challenging final determinations made by the Planning and Development Services Department under the Land Development Code, and to hear and act upon requests for variances, special use permits, non-conforming use determinations, and preliminary development plans under the Land Development Code. A variance is a relaxation of the requirements of the zoning code in a particular case. Because of unusual circumstances, a little enforcement of our zoning code would result in undue or unnecessary hardship. The zoning code permits us to authorize variances only for height, size of structure, or size of yards, and open spaces. If we grant a variance, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property, which must be satisfied if the variance is to remain valid. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a variance are listed in Section 9.04.03 of the Land Development Code. A special use permit is special permission to use property in a fashion which the zoning classification of the property does not automatically permit. If we grant a special use permit, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property, which must be satisfied if the special use permit is to remain valid. Unlike a change in the zoning classification, as a general rule, a special use permit applies only to the specific use requested in the application for a special use permit. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a special use permit are listed in Section 12.12.03 of the Land Development Code. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicants or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the Board and not to the other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the Board. This motion will be voted on by the Board members and become our final order. Any decision made by this Board can be appealed to the Circuit Court. However, any appeal must be filed within 30 days after the Board of Adjustments has rendered the final order which is being appealed. Are there any questions? Before the first case is heard, all of those wishing to speak need to be sworn in. So will the notary please administer the oath?
I'm Mr. Brown, State Department of Public Affairs, Attorney General. All persons who wish to speak on or for audience, do you have any issues, please stand to be sworn? Are you an applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
The applicant doesn't... Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in your testimony? And if so, answer by saying, "I do." You are sworn and may be seated, thank you. Okay. Okay, the first case today is Special Use Permit 21-002.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Jim Troyano for Putnam County Planning and Development Services. I'd like to present to you and the Board Special Use Permit Number 21-002. I do have a presentation for those in the audience, and you do have staff report in front of you and should be able to follow with my presentation. This request for the Special Use Permit is to allow a boathouse greater than 600 square feet on a particular parcel here in Putnam County. The applicant is Colin and Shelley Bingham, and Mr. Bingham is here in the audience and has been sworn prior by Ms. Brown. The location of this Special Use Permit is 113 Marina Road in Palatka. The parcel size is approximately 8.85 plus or minus acres. Its future land use category is agriculture 2, and the local zoning is agriculture. Madam Chair, this is what the proposed boathouse does look like. These are the drawings that have been presented to us for this permit. Simple design. If there's no questions. I'd like to present to you the aerial of the particular location. As you can see, it outlined in blue. This is the future land use, as was mentioned. It is agriculture 2. There's conservation easement to, or conservation property to the west and to the north. So you can see the majority of the area there is agriculture 2. Again, local zoning is agriculture, and that's predominantly evident in the entire area surrounding the applicant's property. From a wetland floodplain standpoint, as you can see, very little at all from a wetland and floodplain standpoint. That's not gonna affect him moving forward. So Madam Chair, if I can, there are 10 criteria that's used for this permit criteria that you, the Board, must evaluate. And I'd like to read, per Section 12.12.03, issuance criteria of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The Zoning Board of Adjustment shall not grant a special use permit unless it makes writing... I'm sorry. Unless it makes written findings that the special use permit has satisfied the following criteria. And there are 10 criteria that's listed. I can tell you that of the criteria that's listed, this special use permit meets all of those. So I would like to look at the first. Is it consistent with a comprehensive plan? Yes, according to its future land use in agriculture 2. This is an activity-based resource, a recreational use, and it is consistent. Recreational-based activities are consistent with our comprehensive plan in both our future land use categories. As well as Article 2.0410B, which defines a boathouse or a structure where personnel, recreational watercraft are stored, to include the term boat shelter. A dock or pier is a boardwalk-type structure that extends over the water to allow direct access to water or fishing, swimming, boating, which may include the boathouse. So for the first, it certainly does meet that as it's consistent with our future land use. And the second, is the use allowed as a special use in the zoning district? So from our criteria in our Land Development Code in Table 2.04, you can clearly see where boathouses, boat shelters, and docks is highlighted, is listed in agriculture, which it says local zoning designation. For the third, will there be any adverse impact or unduly restricting the enjoyment of the surrounding area? We have looked at this, and there is no evidence that would indicate any adverse impacts. In the Section D, the special use will not substantially diminish or impair property values. Again, our staff analysis is that this will not impede or change the orderly development or improvement of this property or any surrounding properties. It's important to note that there's other docks that are in the area. So that's a similar type theme. Is there, looking at the additional indicators or criteria, are there access, adequate access roads and onsite parking? As you can see, an E. There is a legal easement to the property, and the property is currently undeveloped. So there is no development on the property. An F, about adequate measures being taken to provide ingress and egress. Again, the project is not expected to have any adverse impact. And the existing roads are present, and there is a legal easement from the existing roads onto the homeowner's property. In Section G, adequate screening and buffering of the special use will be provided if needed, and there is no buffering that's needed through our analysis. An H, it talks about signs and exterior lighting that will cause glare or other issues. No lighting or signage improvements have been requested at this time by the applicant. Any future request, however, if they are made, would have to be in conjunction with and in compliance with Section 9 of our Land Development Code that addresses lighting and signage. Madam Chair, if I can, in Item I, there will be no undue risks to persons or property from hazardous substances. And our analysis has determined that there is, will not be any hazardous substances included or associated with this type of development. In Section J, the proposed use will not adversely affect the general public, their health or safety, and the welfare of the residents of Putnam County. Again, our analysis has determined that this special use will not adversely affect anyone. You know, its process is pretty straightforward. It's the construction of a dock and a boathouse, which is consistent with other type of uses in the area. So finally, those are your criteria that I've addressed. But the Land Development Code clearly talks about what are requirements for a boathouse or docks. And as you can see in Land Development Code 2.04.10, there are a list of several supplementary uses and regulations. So these criteria will apply to the construction of this boathouse itself, and the applicant will have to follow each of these criteria. Specifically, his request is in Section 5, where it states that up to 600 square feet of boat slip areas, including the footprint of the roof covering of the slips, plus the footprint of any portions of the catwalk that extends beyond maybe covered. The roof may be constructed over catwalks or accessory platforms that are adjacent to the boat slips. Portions of the roof that overhang the access pier or terminal platform are not included in the 600-foot limitation. Boathouses shall not exceed 600 square feet in area unless a special use permit is obtained. And that's exactly what this applicant is requesting, a boathouse in addition, in excess of the 600 square feet that's listed in 5. So getting back to our staff recommendation at the end of my presentation, the applicant has requested this special use permit, which would allow for a 1,440-square-foot boathouse roof, which obviously is more than the 600-square-foot limit. Upon approval of the special use permit from the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the applicant will be required to meet all conditions stated in the Land Development Code and any conditions added by you, the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And I'd like to read these follow, our recommendations. One, the maximum area of the boathouse will be limited to 1,440 square feet. All other features of the dock and the boathouse will comply with the section I just mentioned to you, 2.0410.B of the Land Development Code. Any lighting that may be proposed will have to meet our Land Development Code in Section 7.09. And then the construction of said dock and boathouse will have to comply with the Florida Building Code, the Department of Environmental Protection, or any United States Army Corps of Engineering permitting process. Do you have one other thing to mention here that's in my staff report? That in 2019, if I may, Madam Chair, that this Zoning Board of Adjustment granted in Case Number 2019-002, a boathouse increased from 600 square feet to 1,440 square feet, or a difference of 840 square feet. So that is my presentation to you, Madam Chair. Are there any questions that you may have?
Any questions from staff? Okay, Ms. Mayor.
It may be obvious to somebody other than myself. Where is this, where is it gonna be? How are you gonna get from Point A to the river?
If I can ask the applicant to come up, and he could present where it actually will be going? Mr. Bingham, if you can use this center. Just provide your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, everybody. Colin Bingham, 113 Marina Road. The dock will be on the most northernly section of the land that I own.
I'm gonna give you an aerial so you can see, sir.
Eighty feet from the property, property edge. It's about 80 feet off into the property, on my property, on the first parcel. Do you want me to walk up and point to it?
Here it is. You're welcome to, they have it on their presentation also.
It's gonna be right along the blue line about 80 feet. It's gonna be right there. So there, this is cleared since I'm gonna be moving back there in the day. So that's been cleared. So the access to the property is right there. I'm building a house up here and garage there. There's a walkway down there, so it'll be a boardwalk going through the wetlands.
Okay. Okay, we're not getting all of this on the recording, so...
Miss Ratliff, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, you need to speak into the mic.
So to answer your question directly, there will be a boardwalk that starts up at the uplands, will go through the wetlands, and it'll go down to the dock on the straight edge that you saw up there. And I have met with the DEP onsite, and they've approved all that.
Here's your map, if you want to show them.
I don't know if you guys have this in front of you, but it'll be right along that line, about 80 feet in from the property line. And there'll be access through a boardwalk that goes through the wetlands. And again, it's been approved by the DEP.
Anyone, any other questions? Okay, we sort of got out of our normal routine. So before we continue, have any questions for you? Let's do a site visit, roll call, please.
Earl Ballingie?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Oh, yes.
Ed Kilber?
Yes.
Lynn Osborne?
Yes.
Mary Ratliff?
Yes.
Ron West?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bingham, go ahead and continue. I mean, as you see, most of us did a site visit to see the property. And I know there's a chain link gate that's locked that, when you first, on the right side. So is that, your house is gonna be in that area there? Or is it gonna be on further, close to the river?
The chain link is actually my neighbor's. I have the white vinyl fencing that goes around there. So you didn't quite go down far enough. But the gate that swings open on the white vinyl, if you can remember that. So the chain link will be on your right-hand side that you saw. Then the vinyl fencing starts here. Inside that vinyl fencing will be a garage eventually. And then just over here will be the house, and then the dock is down there.
Okay, I will admit, I did not go through the vinyl fence. So I was just sort of on the outside of it, so, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Bingham?
I got one.
Okay.
This is private dock?
Oh, absolutely.
How big a boat do you have?
Well, we'll have a couple down there, that's the reason. And we have family that live around here, so that's the reason for the 80-foot floating dock. But for the boats, the actual boat lift will be for 35 foot.
And by the looks of this, you'll have a deck above.
Correct.
Be nice.
Well, your neighbor's hoping it's gonna be sort of a marina.
Let's not go there. Let's not open up that kettle of worms.
He was hoping that he would be invited, so, anyway.
Old Phil will be invited.
I was raised, the house on my corner, to turn to go down to the...
Oh, yeah.
My parents built that, and I was...
Oh, so you know exactly where it is?
I rode my horse all through there for years and years and years.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, do we have any other questions for Mr. Bingham? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.
Okay, I mean, there's very few people in the audience, but to make it for the record, I think it's appropriate that I ask the question. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? No one's coming forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? For the record, no one's coming forward. So at this stage, I will close it to the public and open it up for board discussion and motion.
Madam Chairman, we approve Special Use Permit 21-002 as the request meets the criteria for special use permit as required by Section 12, 1203 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, with the four conditions recommended by staff, and authorize the chairman to sign the final order.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to approve Special Use Permit 21-002. Is there any further questions, discussion? Okay, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, there's six of us. All right, all opposed? None? Okay, motion carries 6-0. There is a 30-day appeal process. So if there's any questions or concerns, please work closely with staff, and good luck on your endeavor.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham.
Hey, thank you, Ken.
I need your slideshow. So I'm gonna see, so I go up here to play from the beginning, or play from current slides?
Oh.
Let me see if Crystal...
Yeah, we'll do that at the end. I didn't even think about that.
And then Terry will preside over it. Mr. Perry.
Oh, okay.
So her PowerPoint is here. So when I go to try to play it, so either I go here to start it, it brings me the viewer, but it doesn't bring over the presentation.
We still have a difficulty?
Does the same thing. Should I save it on the computer and try that? You tell me what you think.
That could be true, 'cause I presided over election list.
It is.
And the year before that. They gonna recall me? They gonna recall me?
I can see it, it just won't let me.
Down to nothing.
Oh, I think that's gonna work better. Outstanding.
Okay, there we go. Okay, the next, we have the next case, variance 21-001.
Wendy Hickey for Putnam County Planning and Zoning?
I'm sorry, missed your name.
Your name?
You're gonna have...
Wendy Hickey for...
Okay.
Putnam County planning and zoning.
It's difficult to hear you.
Okay, better?
That's better.
Okay. This is a variance 21-001. This is a... This is for a reduction of a required egress, egress easement within the AG zoning district from 30 feet to 15 feet for Mr. William Osteen at 127 Wilkinson Lane. It's a 10.15-acre parcel in the AG district with agriculture 2 as the future land use. The parcel was created in 1965, prior to the adoption of the county's first zoning ordinance. The current access that he is using for the last 40 years is a 15-foot access easement. The property has existed with two dwelling units on this property for decades, and the access to the property has been dedicated, a dedicated 15-foot easement. On November 3rd of last, last year, the property owner, Mr. Osteen, had requested a lot split for a family member, and that generated the requirement for a 30-foot easement because now it's a lot split instead of a one, one-user, one-family, one-lot type of access. The future land use, as I had discussed, is AG 2. The zoning is AG. And this is an aerial of the property. It's in your packet, it's a little bit clearer than the PowerPoint. As you can see, the lot is 10 acres. And the criteria for a variance is very specific. So you have to show a hardship or something made it, makes it different. Well, because this property has been on, in its current use for 40 years, using one access, and basically not changing much at all, except putting a line down to cut seven and three acres, we consider that very different. This is not something usual. Since it's been a dedicated easement, there have not been any identified issues with the easement to our knowledge in this department. The special conditions, as stated before, it's because it is existing, it is, it's been in use this way. But the applicant did try and fail to acquire the benefit of the additional 15 feet from his neighbors to, to get that, to make that 30 foot. On his site plan for the two, for the lot split, he does indicate the 40-foot turnaround, diameter turnaround, and all the other. It's just this access point that he's really asking for a variance for. And he also reached out to other neighboring, the properties along the side of the variance. So that, not the variance, excuse me, of the easement. So that not necessarily just the person who dedicated the original easement, but the one that abuts it to possibly create that extra 30 feet. And he was unsuccessful. So he has exhausted all options available to him. So this is his only avenue. The staff, now granting this easement will not confer with the applicant any special privilege that is denied by anybody else. The staff doesn't believe that a special privilege is conferred on the applicant by this request. The only mechanism available for him is to, is to secure less than the required easement with, is through this process. And any other person in the same situation would also be afforded that opportunity. The literal, the literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning districts. Dester, the LDC contains the variance provisions that enable property owners for non-conforming lots the ability to develop their property. The literal interpretation of the provisions of the LDC would deprive the applicant of using the property in a manner enjoyed by other property owners who have already developed in this area. Actually, without that division line, he's one of those people that are already enjoying that same 15-foot ability right now. The variance, if granted, is a minimum required for reasonable use. He... His requirement because of the lot split would have been 30 feet. The minimum is 15 feet. He's not, he's not asking for anything additional. He's just asking to, enough to go forward. And in the granting of the variance will be in harmony of the general intent or purpose of this ordinance, and such variance will not be injurious to the area involved. This, this easement has been in place and used for 40 years. So there's, we, staff feels that it would not be injurious to anyone. It's been in place, it's an existing condition at this point. Staff finds that the request to reduce the ingress, egress easement from 30 feet to 15 feet is consistent with the meet and meets the criteria found in Section 9.04.03 of the LDC. Staff recommends the approval of the variance as requested, and it meets the issuance criteria of Section 9.04.03 of the Land Development Code. The applicant is here for any questions, and any questions of me?
Okay, any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. All right, before we proceed, let's do a site visit roll call.
Earl Ballingie?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Yes.
Ed Kilber?
Yes.
Lynn Osborne?
Yes.
Mary Ratliff?
Yes.
And Ron West?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Osteen, would you like to come forward and add anything that has been presented to us today? Okay, just wait till you get to the mic and then talk to us. Okay, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is William Osteen. I live at 127 Wilkinson Road in Barden. All I'm asking for is to be able to give my son a piece of property that they can build a house with his family that's right next door to mine and where he grew up at, and that's, that's all I'm asking. There's two houses, two addresses, and all already there, we're just, he wants to build him a new home, and that's all I'm asking.
Any questions for Mr. Osteen from staff? Okay, thank you, sir. Now, is there anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? No one's coming forward. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? No one's coming forward. So at this time, we'll close it to the public and open it up for board discussion and motion.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve variance 21-001 as it meets the criteria for variance as required by Section 90403 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, and authorize the Chairman to sign the final order.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve variance 21-001. Is there any further discussion? If none, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, all opposed. Motion carries 6-0, so good luck with you. There is a 30-day appeal process, so if there's any issues or concerns, please work with staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good luck. Thank you.
Back to all of y'all.
Welcome. Okay, before we, I wanted to leave the election of officers to the end, so can we look at the minutes for, let me see, December, December 19th, was it? December 16th. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes dated December 16th, 2020?
Move they be approved?
Okay. Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 16th, 2020. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Mr. West, Mary and then Mr. West.
She overtalked me.
That's unusual. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the election of officers, and my understanding is, Mr. Perry, you're going to oversee this process.
It would be my pleasure to do so, Madam Chair. For the purpose of this election, we do have a quorum, and before we begin, may I ask the members if there is anyone who is not ready, willing, and able to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of the position in the event that they are elected either chairperson or vice chairperson? All right, no response, thank you. Is there any member who would request that they not be nominated for either position? Mr. Fisher?
Yes, sir.
Has asked not to be nominated for either position. Does any member object to the vote being conducted by a show of hands? Very well, the floor is now open for nominations for chairperson. Do I hear any nominations?
I make the nomination that we continue to have Linda Osborne as our chair.
I'll second, second, third.
Ms. Osborne? Do I hear any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for chairperson are hereby closed. Linda Osborne has been nominated for chairperson. There are no other nominations. Ms. Osborne will remain the chairperson by acclamation.
I've been shamed, huh?
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, or members of the board, we will now have nominations for vice chairperson. Do I hear any nominations?
I would like to nominate Ron West to continue as our vice chair.
Mr. Ron West has been nominated. Do I hear any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, the nominations for vice chairperson are hereby closed. Because there are no further nominations, Ron West will continue as this, as our chair, by, as our vice chairperson by acclamation. Congratulations to Ms. Osborne.
Congratulations, Mr. West.
Don't you ever miss.
Oh, you do, you do, good guy.
We'll cancel that meeting if you don't show.
And that will, that will conclude our elections for those two positions. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, I just have one, I didn't get the email about Mike leaving, so...
Madam Chair, I'll be glad to speak to you.
Would you like to speak to us with that?
And also, I'd like to take pictures, too.
Oh, that's right.
So we can have our ID cards.
Madam Chair, again, Jim Troyano. So I would like to present to the board that Mike Brown, who has been with us for many years, provided great service to us, has done a lot of good work for this office and the citizens of Putnam County. Mike has taken a position with Clay County in the planning section there. Three things happened to Mike for this, it's, or two main things. He's closer to home, and it's a pay increase for him, and, you know, he has an opportunity for advancement there as far as where he is in his position, more of, almost like a quasi-promotion for him, but at least that's what he tells me it is for him from where he's leaving from here, although it may not be specifically. So Mike has done great work for us. His last day was Friday, so we wished him well on his departure, and Mike will be coming back to help us with our comprehensive plan on March the 2nd, and he'll be available for us for any questions that we may have because of the knowledge base that he possesses as he's taking that with him. In the interim, Mr. Salmon's has stepped up, and as he has twice now, I've asked him to come back and help us when we were missing a senior planner after John left, and he agreed, and I can't thank John enough for that, because he truly saved us and provided great work for us and leadership for us. So John, thank you very much for that, and John's also agreed to be in the acting capacity as manager until Mr. Gabriel Quintus, who we've selected, is hired, I'm sorry, is brought onboard on March the 8th, and then John will be with him for a training period thereafter, and then John's going to go back into retirement, but I know he'll never be far. So I'm very pleased to have John being able to help us, and he makes a lot of things happen, and his institutional knowledge is extremely valuable, as it dates back, I think, even farther than Mike Brown. Yeah, not when? So, yeah, it goes back a very long time. And so I'd also like to introduce, which I maybe should have done earlier, is Ms. Wendy Hickey. Wendy is our new senior planner who presented the variance to you earlier. Wendy comes with a vast knowledge of experience in planning and zoning from Orange City, most recently with Flagler County. So she is a resident of Putnam County, so her, her drive has been lessened. She's received a promotion as senior planner coming here, and we're very pleased to have Wendy onboard. She's done a great job for us, extremely knowledgeable, and as you can see in her work, she's very thorough, and we look forward to a lot of work from Wendy. So that's really going to kind of level out our playing field with Mr. Quintus as our manager. Wendy is being the senior planner, and of course, as our planning technician that we have is Nancy Brown, who wears many hats and gets these meetings accomplished for us, and a lot of good things coming from there. And we also have Ms. Jenny Kidd, who's with us, who is going to be doing those duties as Nancy trains her in that, that responsibility. They work great as a team, and I'm very proud of our overall team we have in the section of planning and zoning. So we're doing a lot of work, we're getting a lot of requests that are coming in, so we're also going to be looking to try to expand. Next budget year, we're asking for a new staff member, a new planner. So we do need the help, and as things continue to grow, we need the assistance. So that's a brief overview about us and our staff. So, Madam Chair, is there anything else that I may answer for you or provide gonads to you or this board?
Anybody got any questions? No, sir, thank you very much.
And at the very end, if we can take pictures, whether you choose to use the flag as a backdrop or you sit in your chair and I just take a picture of you, whatever your preference may be, please let me know, and then we're going to send the pictures. Nancy, if I have this correctly, over to Ms. Gee at EOC. She'll develop the badge for them, and then that will be provided to you, because we have your, your information already on file.
Okay. All right, so...
We can do that after you adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anything else to be addressed today? If not, how about a motion for adjourn?
So move.
Any second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
We stand adjourned.